I would like to open the meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board this evening. A few rules before we start. On Zoom, it's very difficult to see your picture and your name. So if you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I'll try to guess who you are when the time comes. If you're in the audience, there's a lot of us here, and you feel obligated to flap your gums, go out in the hall. If you want to speak, come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, speak, and go back and sit down. That's all the rules for tonight. The first item, let me open the meeting. The Planning Board, we'll open the Planning Board meeting for December 21, 2021. In accordance with S. 2475 and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner: in person at the Great Hall located at the Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass., or remotely on Zoom at https://zoom.us/j/95259821218 with a passcode of 401647. The first item on our agenda this evening are administrative notes and the minutes for December 7, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Would you like to make a motion with regards to the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Tim, seconds in favor. Tim?
Steve.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Paul, is Paul there?
No, he's not.
No. Malcolm, yes, the minutes are accepted. Covenants, plans, and releases. Pine Hills B. 437, Pine Hills LLC, Stonebridge, release lots A-60 and A-61, and Simington/Tupelo release lot of S-266. Any comments, questions, or concerns on those two releases?
I make a motion to release.
We have a motion to release those. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second in favor. Frank?
Yes.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes, it passes. Next two are B. 543, ADM Agwoam Development LLC/Redbrook, release of lots 4-157 and 4-158, and ADM Agwoam Development LLC/Redbrook, side yard setback modification to five feet required is 10 feet for lots 1-450, 1-451, 1-452, and rear yard setback modification to 10 feet, required 20 feet of lots 1-443 through 1-447, 1-450, 1-451, and 1-452. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on those releases?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. In favor, Tim?
Yes.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes, the lots are released. The next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing, continued from 12-7. It's on the town meeting article for a sign bylaw. Robin, would you like to comment on the changes?
So I'll take this one if I could.
Okay.
So you opened the public hearing, you reviewed this, the board asked for two changes, and then also just asked for some time to look at this. So the two changes were the temporary signs being reduced from six months to three months, which we've done in the redline copy you have, and also to include language, make it clear that EV charging stations can have their LED lighting for their, they're actually the instructions for using the facility. So we've added that also. And then just quickly to highlight again, this is taking 12 pages to six, it's taking several charts and going to one. Once adopted, if town meeting chooses to adopt this, I don't think we will see any difference in the way we regulate signs in this town, we just have a more streamlined process. I should say, with the exception of political signs, which again, we've recognized are not really the subject of something that we can enforce fully through our zoning bylaws, so we've eliminated that provision. Those provisions aren't being enforced as of today anyway. So but again, I think once adopted, we just have a clearer, easier read bylaw, and we've made the two changes that the board has asked for. So again, we would ask for you to support it so we can bring it through the process to ultimately take to town meeting in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions, comments, concerns? Tim?
I have none, with the two corrections.
Brigetta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've gone through this, and I think you've done a good job of updating it, so I just have one point of clarification. Under the special regulations, the change you made, filling and electric charging station, does that include electric charging stations that are irrespective of gasoline or filling stations? In other words, wherever they might be in town?
Yes, so it's any filling or any electric charging station, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Frank?
No questions.
Steve?
Just one point, there's a typographic error. Section B. 1B.
B. is that?
B. as in boy. Definitions, commercial sign one, B. secondary architectural sign. It's just the last line, it says, "which does not project more than foot from wall." I don't know if that's supposed to be one foot, but it's just a typographic error.
Yep, got it.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment? If not, I will bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to recommend with the town meeting.
With the correction.
With the correction, correct.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
In favor, Frank?
Yes.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes. So the town meeting article is ready to go and corrected. Next item on the agenda is zoning board of appeals case 4045, Cana Vanna, Inc., continued from December 7, 27, Robert J. Way, map 83, lots 23 through 37-1, and 23-37-2, special permits to operate a marijuana establishment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue?
Malcolm, I'll just, Steve, just a second, I just wanted to give an intro. You lost, this came before the planning board on December 7, and they did a review of their project, and there were a couple of outstanding items that the board wanted to look at a little further, so the petitioner is back tonight to address those issues regarding traffic patterns on Robert J. Way, the septic system, and the impact that that could have with the addition of growing facility, and then the drainage, looking at improvements for the runoff for the impervious areas. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Robin. Is there anyone who, yes, go ahead, yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen, this is the board. My name is Steve Surro, we're in a market LLC, great to see everybody again. As Robin stated, there were a few things that the board was mindful, photometrics, rendering, so we can get a better understanding of how the facility will look when completed. We've listed a native plant list, as well as our recap and evaporation system, and traffic mitigation plan. We do have all of those together, and I do have a presentation that we sent last week. I'm not sure if Robin has it up, or if you'd like an architect to share, but he can definitely put that on. Would you like us to go through the plan, and more so just run through the slides, with the rendering, photometrics, landscape man, and breaking down exterior lighting? About that, if you'd like?
Okay, thank you all. We will ask. Is there anyone? Anyone from the audience who would like to comment? Okay, bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments? Brigetta?
Yeah, through the chair. So thank you for your presentation last, our last meeting, and for sending the presentation to us in our packets. I still do have some concerns about the septic system for this reason. It was built in 2006 with an H. 20 scheduled PVC, and it's under a impervious surface, which has been since 2006, had continuous truck and car traffic. And I see in your new rendering that you also are redirecting parking and car traffic right over this soil absorption system for this septic system that's now 15 years old. So, and because your new establishment, which all of your plans look quite nice, and thank you for that, but your new establishment is right at the headwaters of the Eel River, I would like to make a recommendation to this board that as part of our acceptance of this plan, that we ask for a registered sanitarian to inspect this system prior to you moving forward with refurbishing the buildings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tim?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Frank? Steve?
I can't hear him.
I think he's.
He's talking, but his volume is.
You're on mute, Frank.
That's a good way. Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
He's still talking.
All right, so we have it. Would somebody like to make a motion with regards to this? I have no additional comments other than, Ms. Keans.
So motion to approve with the condition of a registered sanitarian approval of the existing septic system?
Is that, and any staff recommendations too, correct?
Yes.
Yes, including the staff recommendations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. In favor, Tim?
Yes.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes. The issue is moving forward to the Board of Appeals. Next item is zoning board of appeals 4046, Interplan LLC, 49 Commerce Way, map 103, lot 14K-175, modification of special permit number 3885 to waiveside setback requirements in order to construct a drive-through canopy on Chick-fil-A. Robin?
Thank you. I believe the petitioner is here, but I'll just do a brief overview. They're looking for a waiver of a side yard setback to create a canopy cover to the existing drive-through for the Chick-fil-A that is in the planned shopping center on Commerce Way, just across the street from Colony Place. The canopy is about 27 feet by 52 feet long, and it covers over the two drive-through areas above where the ordering stations are. The canopy is being proposed basically, really, to protect the customers and the staff. Their staff actually stand out there and take orders to keep things moving quickly with COVID, and the way things have been going, we have so much interest in pickup ordering all the time now, and it's very busy. So they're doing this to be efficient, to keep their staff out there, and they're doing this to protect them from the elements and the weather. There's no impacts to any of the parking spaces or the site circulation at all. The images they have provided show pretty simple, clean line cover. It's about nine and a half feet high at the underside. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience, or concerns, or comments? Okay, we bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion to recommend, the ZDA.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Motion and a second in favor. Frank?
Yes.
Brigetta?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes. Next item on our agenda is a site plan review. Spencer Plymouth Realty LLC, 10 Collins Ave, map 101, lots 42-1, 42-9, 38, and 32H. Construct a 137,500 square foot industrial manufacturing building at the site. Stormwater and erosion controls will be implemented. Grading and leveling of the site will entail earth removal of 488,000 cubic yards from the site. Please note that the planning board previously determined this to be a unified complex, and that the applicant will seek approval of a solar installation at the site via separate application.
Did we just get called?
Is there any, are you gonna walk around and flap your gums, or are you gonna come to the podium like I asked initially and introduce yourself and begin?
I will come to the podium and introduce myself. I just walked into the room, I didn't hear the precursor.
In any event.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sims, and I am representing the petitioner in this case, which is Mr. Scott Spencer, on behalf of Spencer Realty and Northeast Traffic Control. I'm not gonna bore this committee with the historical chronology of this particular case, because you're well familiar with it. I am not as familiar with it, I just got brought into this case recently, so I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, but I'm gonna do my best to try to address questions that are presented to us, and at the same time, make a cogent presentation to what this board is looking for tonight. So with me tonight is, is Rich here, Rich Tabrizinski? There you go, yes, our project engineer, Shay Spencer, who is doing part of the presentation, along with Mike Sutton, who will present as well, and Mr. Scott Spencer, the owner of the property, and Northeast Traffic Control. In any event, do we have a full board tonight? I'm sorry, we don't, right?
Yeah, it's on Zoom.
No. Actually, we have Frank Mann on, and Paul McCullough is not here, so we have four members.
So Mr. Mann is on Zoom and is a voting member? Okay. So before we begin, I would just like to address one concern that I have, and it's been brought to my attention just recently that one of.
[inaudible]
Apparently, it's been well-known to my client in this particular board that the Pine Barrens Alliance has made a number of demands upon the Director of Inspection Services here in town, as well as this particular board, as to certain elements of this particular project. And I've been advised that Mr. Mann is also a member of the Pine Barrens Alliance. Based upon that information, and the vocal and written opposition to this project, I believe it is inappropriate, and I've got concerns of Mr. Mann's ability to be impartial in acting on behalf of this board on this decision. So I would respectfully ask Mr. Mann individually to please recuse himself from participating in this particular case, and if not, then I would ask the chairman to take some action and address the concerns of my client with respect to this. There is at the very least an appearance of impropriety with respect to conflict of interest with the Pine Barrens Alliance in this particular case, and if it were to advance beyond this particular hearing with Mr. Mann participating, there could be some fallout that I don't think this board, the town, or anybody wants to see. So if Mr. Mann would respectfully recuse himself from this matter, I believe we can advance and make a presentation, this board can vote without any potential conflict of interest issues. That being said, we are prepared to move forward once the board and Mr. Mann decide what they're gonna do in terms of our request, and we'll make our presentation.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the legal basis is for asserting a conflict of interest?
Sure. The state ethics law is very, very clear in terms of people who are sitting on a publicly elected or appointed board, and participating in a group that has clear opposition or support of it, either way, you can't have an appearance of impropriety, one way or another, on any issue presented to the board if you are involved with an opponent or proponent of that. And if you want me to cite?
Yes, I'd like you to cite the regulation, please.
So who's making that statement?
Oh, that was you, okay, I couldn't even figure that out, okay.
I thought it was.
A municipal employee may not act in a manner that would cause a reasonable person to think that she would show favor towards someone, or that she can be improperly influenced. Section 23B. 3. Also requires a municipal employee to consider whether her relationships and affiliations could prevent her or him from acting fairly and objectively when he or she performs her duties for a city or a town, and if he or she cannot be fair and objective because of a reasonable relationship or affiliation, he or she should not perform his or her duties. So Mr. Mann is the director of the Pine Barrens Alliance. They've written to our direction of inspectional services, they voiced opposition to this project, to my client directly, and I think I've said enough. You have it in front of you, that he's involved with the Pine Barrens Alliance, Pine Barrens Alliance is opposed to this project on many fronts, and he's a sitting member of this board. So I think it's appropriate that Mr. Mann recuse himself from the discussion and voting on this project.
Thank you. We are well aware of this. I sent a note to Mr. Mann this morning to ask him that question. I don't appreciate all the legal jumbo-jumbo I just heard threatening us in this matter. Mr. Mann, would you please give us your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, before that, I don't appreciate the comment of a threat. This is not a threat, this is a statement to protect not just this board, but the town, my client, and everybody, so that they have, everybody has a fair and impartial hearing on this, without the potential for some fallout down the line. So there's no threat here. I'm just bringing this to the attention of the board, I'm glad that you are already aware of it, and will appreciate Mr. Mann's comments as well.
Can I proceed?
Yes.
So first of all, the facilities of the Pine Barrens Alliance is in no way involved in this issue. I was informed that, it has been said that there's a legal suit brought by our group, which is the group SEMPA, and that's not the case. In fact, this whole matter began when I, as a member of the planning board, did my due diligence and visited the site in question to understand what would be the ramifications of any decisions or conditions, or anything that would happen. It's a normal course of events for any planning board member to want to know what he or she may be voting on. So in early October, I visited the site and discovered that there had been major excavation, sand removal had taken place, everything that I could see in my site had been removed, and I brought this to the intention, to the attention of the planning staff, because I felt it was inappropriate, especially because we had yet to do a site plan review, we had plans before us, and several times the site plan review had been delayed, and what was happening seemed to me to be out of the norm, irregular, and unacceptable from my perspective, and I brought that to the attention, and as it turns out, the removal of sand and gravel from the site had been specifically prohibited in a stump and tree removal permit that had been given to them. I have an actual statement I'd like to make on the whole project, if I would be allowed, but again, to talk about conflict of interest, in no way is SEMPA, the group, I guess that's referred to as the Pine Barrens Alliance in this case, involved in this, and in no way was that in any way why I visited the site, any of the sites I visit as a member of the planning board, representing the community, not in any specific interest of my own. Now, of course, like anyone on any board, I have a background, I have experience, I have my interests, and I am a member of a nonprofit, but they are not involved in this in any way, and I don't know how they would be involved in this specifically. It's not something, the Pine Barrens Alliance basically works to preserve open space as much as they can, but it's also understood that the bylaws of the community seek to preserve that same open space, and in fact, our natural features conservation bylaw seeks to preserving as much of the natural topography and woods and wildlands as we possibly can, even in an industrial park. So I'm representing the community on the planning board, not a specific group. I could be a construction manager for a major construction company and be elected to the planning board, and I doubt anyone would say, oh, you can't vote on these things because you're biased in favor of construction. So there are no grounds to say this. As a matter of fact, I understand that Northeast Traffic Control, someone representing them, several weeks ago, before this matter came before, before the plans we have now before us were revealed, went to the town clerk's office and asked about a recall petition for me, and I was kind of amused hearing this, trying to understand why that would be the case, because I simply brought to the intention of our staff what was going on there after they received that permit. Nothing out of the ordinary, and even a citizen could bring to light, or bring to the attention of staff in the community, something they thought may not be completely straightforward or acceptable within the regulations. So again, I have no intention of recusing myself, I don't think there's any way, a case to be made for that, that I'm biased in this case. Yes, you should consider these things in all things you do, as a member of the board, and I definitely do consider those things, but I'm representing the board and the community in this, and not in any particular group. Thank you.
Do you want to get on with the meeting, or?
Yeah, we're gonna go on with the meeting, of course.
All right, well, let's go.
I'm just gonna bring to the board's attention one last item. As of yesterday, there was a letter received from an attorney, Jonathan Palloni, who represents STPB, which is the Save the Pine Barrens Committee, and in which he alleges they are an aggrieved party, and he's looking for a cease and desist order. So to disassociate yourself or divorce yourself from that particular committee and sit on this board, I think is a little bit disingenuous, at the least. this board, I think, is a little bit disingenuous at the least, but it is up to the board.
That is not the Pine Barrens Alliance. That is not the Pine Barrens Alliance. So you have a little confusion there. You said you came to this to claim the aim.
I did.
And I think you, so I would just tell you that that is not the Pine Barrens Alliance, the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance. It's a separate entity.
So Save the Pine Barrens is not part of the Save the Pine Barrens Alliance. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Well, there's a letter by an aggrieved party alleging to be Save the Pine Barrens, and if they disassociate themselves with the other entity, so be it. I've made my statement for the record, and we're going to proceed with our presentation at this point. And we will start with?
So Chairman McGregor, if I could just make just one point. So we have four members here in present and Frank on Zoom. The fourth member is our alternate, so he is not permitted to vote on this. He can only vote on special permits. For some reason, that's what state law does. So we have three, 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 four members who are here to vote on this. We don't have the five. So just so everyone's aware, the quantum of vote is three.
We'll go with that. Okay, so I think we're going to start our presentation now. And first up? Okay.
All right, hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us talk about our project. Appreciate everyone taking time out of their busy schedule. So my name is Shay Spencer. I'm here today with my father, Scott, and Mike. I'm going to get in a little bit about the history of our company, talk about our future plans for this project. I'd like to begin by providing a bit of a context to who we are as a company and then elaborate on our roots in Plymouth. I'll then touch on where our company is going in the future and how we intend to adapt to the changing landscape that we're in. As I'm sure everyone knows, the whole infrastructure bill that just passed will have a large impact on how we work going forward. So is there a way to go to the next? So? Right here?
Nope.
Oh, right here. All right, so who we are as a company. So we started here in Plymouth. My father started working here, you know, as a company of one directing traffic throughout Plymouth. He then expanded over the 27 years. We've grown from a single-person company to over 50 people. You know, he started years before I was even born, and now it's kind of coming on to the next generation. We now have 50 employees. We service all of New England. We have jobs up to the tip of Maine, down to Connecticut. We do all of this. We have, you know, hundreds of trailers. We do all of this out of a 10,000-square-foot building, out of three acres of usable land. It's pretty easy to say that at this point, we are overflowing. We have extended our capacity. We can no longer function out of our current situation. Here's just a short list of the services we offer, the state's town infrastructure. These are kind of the services that we do, and we've really expanded from, you know, day one of just directing traffic to all of these other forms of supporting our state's infrastructure. Now, what we really want to focus on is not where we've been, but where we're going in the future. A big part of that is they've come out with this $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill. Now, in order for us to ramp up for this infrastructure bill, we need to reinvest in Plymouth, in the industrial park, and we need to give ourselves room to grow. We need to give ourselves room to really expand, really, you know, provide the state's infrastructure what they need. And then this growth will in turn create jobs within Plymouth, will create property tax, will create excise tax that will benefit the town. Now, this is just kind of a breakdown of how this infrastructure bill is allocated. Now, $25 billion worth of this is going towards roads and bridges within New England. Now, what we want to do with this 135,000-square-foot building, you can see we're going from 10,000 square feet into a much, much larger building that's already permitted. We are looking to add an entire extruded panel manufacturing facility, which will create jobs for the people within Plymouth. Now, the reason for this and why it would be in demand is you can see, these are the two other major sign manufacturing facilities. There's, you know, you really need to, we need to have something that can service the New England region. Right now, if we need to get anything, it's a 14-hour to 24-hour drive to the closest facility. That Interstate Signways is actually the one that was looking to put their facility with us. And this is kind of what it would look like inside that facility. And as you can see, this is a very large area which would create many jobs within the town. Now, Mike and my father are going to go into, how can we make it so that we not only grow in order to keep up with our expansion and to capitalize on this new infrastructure bill, but how can we grow in a way that is also a win for the town of Plymouth and also really maintains the integrity of the town? Right where we are is the first thing that people are going to see when they drive into the town of Plymouth. We want to make sure that what they see isn't all of our cones, all of our drums, all of these really bright reflective materials. So how do we make it so that not only do we give ourselves the room to grow within the town, invest in the town that has been here now for two generations, and hopefully will go on for generations to come, but how do we make it so that it is also in the best interest of the town and preserves the integrity of the town where as soon as you get off that next exit, you're going to historic Plymouth, you're going into, you know, the areas that much of us are really proud of, and that's why we live here, things that we really cherish. So Mike and my father will get into how we get into this project, and how do we do it in a way that preserves that integrity and makes it a place that you're proud of. So I'll hand it off to Mike.
Thanks, Shay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Sutton. I'm the engineering manager for Northeast Traffic Control. I wish I could tell you that I was advocating to keep it here in Plymouth because I live in Upton, and I drive to Plymouth every day. But he's hell-bent on staying in town, so I lost that battle a long time ago. Under the previous approved plan, there are some things that really troubled us when we started looking at what was there, you know, that requires raising that area of about four acres between almost 18 and 48 feet in some areas. And that's in two-foot lifts with a lot of heavy vibratory compaction equipment. If you've ever worked next to one of those or anywhere near those, it'll vibrate your desk as you're sitting at it. You know, with retaining walls all around it and right up to the lot lines, no buffers, no green space, no new plantings along the site perimeter because those walls are really pushed all the way out to our neighbors. So no buffers at all. There were some limited plantings for internal vegetation on, say, parking lot islands. There were some trees and some immediate vegetation along the building, but not a lot. Building and construction equipment would be fully visible to the commuters and tourists just before they exit downtown Plymouth, as Shay was pointing out. You know, you can see the site now as you drive by it from the highway. And seeing a building there with all of our construction equipment, which I'll show you an example of shortly here, really not all that appealing to the eye, to be honest. And that's one of the things we're trying to shield, and we were asked to shield actually when Scott developed the property that we're on now. And I'll explain that a little bit further in the presentation. Additionally, the current plan would, you know, cost a little bit more money. Not that 1.2 is a little, that's actually a lot, but, you know, it's a lot of excavation, compaction, testing with each lift, plus the extended time to actually do all that work. What we're looking to do is to minimize the walls along the site, get them away from the lot lines where we do have to keep them because of the grades and because of water treatment areas, water retention areas. That would open up lots of areas for us for plantings of trees, shrubbery, green space on the exterior, not only shielding the building and the site and everything within it from the highway and the motorists coming into town on Route 3, but also from our neighbors, you know? Instead of them looking at retaining walls that are right up against their property line in their existing facilities, they'd have a green space and a buffer between us and them as well. It also allows the opportunity for us to add some solar carports. You know, we are an environmentally conscious company. We try where we can, and it's one of the things that we're trying to do to advance our lead building certification as we move forward. Because of the type of work that we're talking about doing, it reduces the amount of fill that would need to be put in certain areas, so it really reduces the amount of heavy compaction that would be needed and increases a lot of flexibility for butter coordination. You know, we've been working with some of our new neighbors, and with that additional buffer, it gives us opportunities to create areas for snow storage for them that they don't have now. And it's been a problem for some of the neighbors, and they've asked. We've been very accommodating, moving things around, just giving them areas that they can access for upkeep of their own property and access along their property lines. This here is just to give a representation of the current site. You can see that elevation 100 is the bottom of that drainage ditch that is there. The yellow represents the edge of the current cut that is there. The rest of the site, aside from having the trees removed and being stumped, has been untouched for the most part. If the dirt was moved, it was simply moved around within the site. The only area that's been disturbed has been from the parking lot to that yellow line. This is just a quick illustration of the cuts and fills to give you the order of magnitude for this site. The grade changes in this site are dramatic. They go from, I want to say, almost 180 down to about 100 at its height, and the 180 is probably right about here. That's the top of the mountain. And, you know, so there's a lot of topography challenges here within this site. Just to give you another illustration here, this is what the site looks like today. The site, the line, the bottom line you see, there's actually, and I know you can't see it at this scale, but there's a little tiny grade stake that that arrow is pointing to. That's elevation 130, which is the same elevation that we were standing at when that picture was taken. So our feet are at 130, and then that parking lot pitches down. That upper elevation is the 147.6 that would be the finished floor elevation of the building, thus requiring all that fill and all those retaining walls along that site. And again, the bottom is just an aerial view so that you can see, this picture here is taken from this parking lot, looking out toward that hill. Just to give you an idea, with Triple M being over, I think it died on me, Triple M being over on the right. Again, just another illustration of where the current cut is now within the site and where it falls within the building footprint and the finished floor elevation of 147 on the as-permitted plan. So what's permitted now, I don't need to tell you. You all know. You've been really involved with this process for quite a while. You can see this site here, most of the perimeter on Route 3 and along the abutters to the bottom of this plan, the south side, south and west, you can see those are mostly retaining walls, and they are literally right up against the property lines with parking fields right against those. Those green spaces are permitted and shown right now in the current set as just mainly grass, no plantings, no trees, except for within the islands, as I spoke of earlier, within the parking fields and along the perimeter of the building itself. So this is a rendering to show you that if you're at the highway, that grade's about 152. With a finished floor elevation of 147.6, this is what it would look like with the equipment to the north of the building, with the main complex being to the south of that open field. We currently have several yards, because the one we're in, as Shay pointed out, we're busting at the seams. Being the largest rental equipment fleet here in New England, we've got about 1,500 pieces of equipment. And at any given time, especially this time of year, most of that comes home to roost, and that's what it would be looking like times 10. And that's not what we want people to see as they come into Plymouth. We want it to be welcoming. We want to hide our shame, so to speak, from the general public because it's an eyesore. I mean, you get the slightest bit of a headlight catching that reflective material, and it comes right back at you. Anybody who's seen a drum off on the side of the road can speak to that. So what we're proposing with the addition of that extra parcel on the left, it gave us the ability to sort of elongate things a little bit and create these green spaces, these buffered areas all the way around the complex to shield it not only from the public out on Route 3 and the tourists that are headed to Cape Cod and downtown Plymouth, but also from our neighbors, just to give some separation. This is sort of a rendering of what it would look like. Now, this is showing the building at elevation 130 with a carport solar over our equipment field. So not only would it shield it horizontally from sight with the grade difference, you also get a cover on top to keep, to limit visibility additionally to it. Just another picture of what it would look like. You can see all the trees. The whole idea of this is basically to shield it with trees and vegetation from the highway and our neighbors. Just another look at it there from an elevated view over the highway. This is just so you could see what it would look like with the carport. Instead of trucks, for the most part, you would see traffic control equipment, message boards, what have you, drums, and all our other pieces of equipment and some construction materials because we do store overhead sign structures and signs on our site as well. We have presented to the board, I believe you guys have all the letters, not only from people in town, some area abutters, but also every one of the adjacent abutters has sent letters of support for this project. You know, everybody thinks it's a good idea. They don't want to be looking at our building as much as we don't want to be looking at theirs. But it makes for a much better feel within that complex, within the industrial complex, so that doesn't feel like, you know, when you come down 495 and you're looking at all those buildings from the highway or an Amazon facility that's unshielded from the highway, you just look at a big building. We're trying to change that. We really care about what it looks like, the look and feel as you're coming into town and within the complex itself. This here is a view of our current lay-down yard. Our building would be just off-screen above, below this where the camera shot was taken. This is just a taste of some of our equipment. That's probably an eighth of what we own. We've got several yards throughout the area that are full of our equipment at this time of year because they all come home due to, you know, winter construction season. There is a video here. I don't know how to play it, though. See if that doesn't. There it is. Just to kind of give you an idea, right now, that's three acres cleared? And in this particular case, you can see that that is also sunken. It was reduced from the building grade by quite a bit, and I want to say it's probably about 15 feet. And that was done because of the housing complexes up on the hill there didn't want to be looking at our equipment off in the distance. It's one thing to see all the buildings, but nobody wanted to see all that orange. So a request was made by the town when Scott was building this facility to hog that out and recess our equipment area. And we're following the same ideas what he was asked to do previously. And then the major sort of visual for this is just so that you can see, there's a carport solar field right there at the Comcast Center, the Comcast building, rather, and that's what we're looking to do over that equipment field so that you wouldn't see it from above. It shields it from, you know, horizontally if it's down below grade. With that, I guess we'll open it up to questions. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Your presentation is complete?
It is. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me have the board ask any initial questions before I bring it to the audience.
Excellent. Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be a statement that I had prepared and I hoped to read before with the presentation by the petitioner. And there are some questions to bear with me being on Zoom. Sometimes these things have their own issues. First of all, it was my hope that we did not begin this site plan review for the material for forest expense realty at all until and unless the proponents satisfied to really explain what they thought, why they thought it was permissible to alter the lots in question before the present planning board had the opportunity to discuss their plans in common. The proposal before us, in my opinion, is little of the example that the proposal made earlier this year and for which a tree and stump removal was given for site preparation. That permit, which I would have sought to condition if I was given the opportunity, noted specifically that no gravel was to be removed. Yet when I almost accidentally discovered that permit being implemented likely weakened that operation, trucks carrying sand and gravel were entering and leaving the site, a direct violation of that permit, which is a very simple permit, says no gravel permitted, no gravel removal permitted. Though I believe they were ordered to cease those To control salt, strong, protect the environment, preserve character, encourage economic development, balance cost and growth, and improve quality of life. I would say that the plan only addresses one, the encouraging economic development. A major important one, yes, but not all the entire thing. Finally, a foundational element number three is the select board and the recently two declarations they made. First, they declared a climate emergency to ensure the town factors climate and environmental impacts with all policies, procedures, planning, and decision making. I think it's self-evident that the removal of thousands of trees and natural ground cover over the vast majority of the lots in question does not reflect concern for climate impacts, no matter what the new plan suggests we'll do after the fact. Also, the select board adopted a climate action, zero decarbonization plan. The removal of nearly every tree and shrub, move a dozen acres of heavily wooded hilly terrain creates, I think, the opposite effect of what that declaration has.
Thank you. I meant just to have a couple of quick questions from the board before I had staff comment. Tim, do you have any quick questions?
I'd like to hear from staff and any residents that are here before I make any comments. Thank you.
Brigetta?
I agree with Mr. Grandy. I'd like to wait to hear from the audience and from the staff.
I'll wait as well.
Okay. Robin or Lee?
Basically, tonight, the memo to the building commissioner from the planning board should be, where you, the planning board, determine whether or not the gravel removal that they're proposing here is incidental to the project. And I think just through their presentation of what their reasoning behind dropping the site, I think there's some relative good points about that. It is the, the, the visual entrance into the town from the highway that they're trying to address. So I think that that is very important for the town and as a community visually to look at the impact of that. They have support from all of the surrounding abutters. And this is industrial zoned. I mean, we have an economic issue and concern in town. And I know Frank mentioned that was the only one he felt was addressed in this, but even in the natural conservation section of the bylaw, it talks about outside of active construction areas to try to retain as many of the trees as you can. And I think we don't, we have very limited industrial and commercial land in town. And I think that it's important for us to be able to utilize it where we can. And it's, it's, it's sandwiched right between the highway and all other industrial uses. So I, I believe that this makes sense in, in the area like this.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this? If you wish to, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Dick Quintle, Precinct 1. I came here as a business owner, but one of the members brought up the board of selectmen. So if I may have a few minutes to explain how I feel, how I interpret it, and how Mr. Man interprets it. But the reason I came here tonight was to support this, this business coming to town, because not only is it supporting this business, who's been my neighbor, by the way, and I never knew Mr. Spencer until I moved to Scobee Circle. And anyway, I maybe seen him six, seven times, talk all the time. He watched my property, I watch his. Now we all have cameras. He's been a good neighbor. I've watched a man build a business from maybe six to eight trucks to probably 70, 80 tractor trailer noses, you name it, probably 90, 100 vehicles for income for the town of Plymouth. Two weeks ago, we had a tax classification hearing on our board. People want to have a split tax rate. We can't have a split tax rate. Why can't we have a split tax rate? We don't have enough business in this community. Okay? And we have to address it and I want to work with this board to do that. And that's one of my goals for this year, one of the boards. So I don't know how we get there if we don't welcome business. Yeah, they have to follow the rules. When I built my building on Scobee Circle, I had a problem. People, and I'm not going to name the name of the surveying company, they're well known in town, marked the trees wrong with the wrong color tape, I guess. One of the neighbors come over and says, hey, there's supposed to be a so-and-so flip bumper here. So we took out the tape. Me and another guy said, wow, we got a problem, Houston. We're shot like 50 feet. They took it down the wrong thing. We worked it out, we put up something and the park gave them some land. Things happen. But you know, people come into this town, no matter what business it is, we need business. All right? We need business. We need to change the way we do business in this community. And you know who gets the blame for it? We do. When I say we, the select board. And that has to change. We have to figure out an area of town where businesses can go and we can have some relief in this town. Because I'll tell you what, the people are crazy in this town with their tax rates. And I don't blame them. That being said, and the CANS agreement and this other thing we're going to put together, I have reservation after hearing some of the remarks I heard tonight. And I was a little reluctant with that, so I wouldn't be putting restrictions on businesses and people in this community that were uncalled for. I want to partner with yous, as you know, to go into the whole tech property, which is a large process, but I'm not going to go in with this kind of attitude. I know some has to go in conservation. I totally get it. And I want to work with you, but I'm not going to go in with a, you know, with an alliance or a partnership that, that's one way. It can't be. That's not the way it's supposed to be and that's no, I'll never support it. I'll tell you right now. And I know there's going to be another member here tonight that's at the conservation committee. And that's what's hard about, you know, meeting on the same nights. Normally, I wouldn't be able to come here. I missed the meeting that they had the last time because I was down the hall in another meeting. We were Zooming. So, you know, we lost 7 million plus tax dollars to the community this year just from whole tech. That has to be made up, at least partially the way. There has to be a plan in place to move forward for everybody, conservation, whatever. But you know, I see businesses trying to come here and getting every hurdle thrown at them as possible. They bring lawyers, they bring architects, they bring this, they got the whole lineup. I don't know how many are in this room and what it's costing an hour. And they keep coming back and keep doing it. There's got to be a better way, people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah? Somebody on the?
My name is Jay Kimble.
Okay.
I'm, I'm talking on Zoom.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name, yep, my name is Jay Kimble. I'm speaking as a resident. I just want to come over to the boards in town and I want to speak in behalf of those boards. I want to briefly, briefly explain and just go a little bit further than what Mr. Kimble just talked about. Two weeks ago, there was a tax classification hearing where we wanted to keep a single tax rate. And the percentage of residential tax revenue in this town is 85%. Commercial is 15%. So you start wanting to have, we have the commercial land that is available, and other than this, we have the industrial park, which is no land available at that industrial park on 77th and Cherry Street. So you have an applicant, and if you hear who has a work in this side, whether it is private, it's approved, and I'll leave that to you. However, I will say that 17 acres approximately the size of this land that Mr. Spencer has is generating revenue to the town only of a vacant land assessment. If Mr. Spencer approves the property, puts 137,000 square feet of building on a property on 17 acres, the assessment is going to go from basically zero to the millions and billions of dollars. The piece of land probably generates zero jobs, and again, revenue to the tax revenue. As a community, we have to really look hard about increasing the commercial tax revenue to the town. If you have a piece of land like this, it's commercially owned, industrial owned, located in an industrial park, that's where industrial businesses do grow. And again, I'm only going to look at the economic benefits of the town by trying to increase the commercial tax base, hopefully someday take a little pressure off the residential tax rate. Again, the board will decide whether this project will serve, and we really think we have to be concerned with increasing the commercial tax base over a period of time and how you look at projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin arriving on Zoom. May I make a statement?
Certainly.
Thank you. As a, the director of that is horribly impacted by this because the land in question is all because of the north of the Turcaline Facility and the south of the Turcaline Facility. I just wanted to weigh in. I did have my letter indicating support in our community for this project. I think the applicant has done an excellent job in reaching out to the neighbors and sharing the plans and absolutely modifying the plans and what we've seen before. And I think that this would be a great benefit not only to the industrial park, but to the town of Plymouth. And I would very support it for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Nacya.
Okay. Yes, Nacya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nacya. I'm a journey on the edge of Plymouth. My family has four generations of family businesses in and of the area, and I'm a key in family companies. We are back in the area running businesses and playing by the rules for 125 years. My comments about this project are not about not developing this land. I know it's about, I know it's industrial owned land in an industrial park. Of course, it's only reasonable to develop it. My comments are about playing by the rules. Spencer has violated the rules and has obtained the zoning permit by fraud. And I know a lot of people here probably don't understand or know the backstory of what is going on here. So I'm going to tell you, as I said, I'm owner of the, I'm a client of the Sheen Family Companies. I'm a journey sheen's daughter. He was one of the owners of the industrial trust until recently, all of these lots on, fallen down, including ones that it's subject of this project. I'm here in my capacity as an owner of the company and someone with an ownership interest in the industrial park trust that I have more dealings with the planning board over this project. As Mr. Man mentioned, the zoning permit that was issued, that permit was obtained by fraud and it involved our company's name and our company's reputation, and it continues to harm our business reputation the way this project has violated rules. The planning board should not be going forward until you address violations. The fraud interfering, the building, the zoning permit by submitting a zoning permit application with our company's name on it does. Mr. Spencer did, he did not own the property. He then obtained the zoning permit that should never have been issued because the plans were outdated and expired. And the zoning inspector that built the apartment had absolutely no authority to use that permit. Again, my father and his business partner, Eric, who owned this property in a real estate trust, called industrial trust, they owned it for many decades. Over the years, many developers approached them with proposals to sell or lease the property. They held on to it, they didn't do anything. Plans were drawn up and submitted to the town over the years, but not being fruitioned. One of the groups they were talking to was the Northeast Traffic Control to build a facility there. Different plans were drawn up. All of the plans that we were involved with, and more of these traffic controls was involved with, were consistent in the town's bylaw for natural features conservation and all were consistent with the standards of the planning board site review. None of those plans required the removal of sand and gravel in order to develop a park. This plan is a ruse for removing about 6 million dollars of sand and gravel. Our plans show that it is not necessary or incidental to remove this much sand and gravel in order to develop this site. The industrial trust- If you have a piece of land like this, it's commercially owned, industrial owned, located in an industrial park. That's where industrial businesses do all. And again, I'm only going to look at the economic benefits of the town of trying to increase the commercial tax base, hopefully someday take a little pressure off the residential tax rate. Again, the board will decide whether this project will serve. And we really think we have to be concerned with increasing the commercial tax base over a period of time and how you look at projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin arriving on Zoom. May I make a statement?
Certainly.
Thank you. Um, as a, uh, the director of the board, it's probably an impact involved by this because the land in question is all because of the north of the Tertullan Facility and it's a south of the Tertullan Facility. I just wanted to weigh in. I did have my letter indicating support from our community for this project. I think the applicant has done an excellent job in reaching out to the neighbors and sharing the plans and absolutely modifying the plans and what we've seen before. And I think that this would be a great benefit not only to the industrial park, but to the town of Plymouth. And I would very support it for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Nashia.
Okay. Yes? Nashia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nashia. I'm a attorney on the name of Plymouth. My family has four generations of family business in the area. I'm a stock-in family companies. We are back in the area of business and playing by the rules for a hundred twenty-five years. My comments about this project are not about not developing the land. I know it's about, I know it's industrial zone land in an industrial park. Of course, it's only reasonable to develop it. My comments are about playing by the rules. Spencer has violated the rules and has obtained the zoning permit by fraud. And I know a lot of people here probably don't understand or know the backstory of what is going on here. So I'm going to tell you. As I said, I'm owner of the, I'm a life, she and family companies. I'm Jerry Sheen's daughter. He was one of the owners of the industrial trust until recently. Almost some of these lots, I'm falling out of believing once that it's subject of this project. I'm here in my capacity as an owner of the company and someone with an ownership interest in the industrial park trust. I have more dealings with the planning board over this project. As Mr. Man mentioned, the zoning permit that was issued, that permit was obtained by fraud. And it involved our company's name and our company's reputation. And it continues to harm our business reputation. The way this project has violated rules. The planning board should not be going forward until you address violations. The fraud interfering, the building, the zoning permit by submitting a zoning permit application with our company's name on it. That's what Mr. Spencer did. He did not own the property. He then obtained the zoning permit that should never have been issued because the plans were outdated and expired. And the zoning inspector that built the department had absolutely no authority to use that permit. Again, my father is a business partner, urban foreign, owns this property in a real estate trust, called Industrial Trust. They owned it for many decades. Over the years, many developers approached us with proposals to sell or lease the property. They held on to it, they didn't do anything. Plans were drawn up, submitted into the town over the years, but not being fruitioned. One of the groups they were talking to was the Northeast Traffic Control to build a facility there. Different plans were drawn up. All of the plans that we were involved with, and more of these traffic controls involved with were consistent in the town's bylaw for natural features conservation. And all were consistent with the standards of the planning board site review. None of those plans required the removal of sand and gravel in order to develop the park. This land is a ruse for removing about six million dollars of sand and gravel. Our plans show that it is not necessary or incidental to remove this much sand and gravel in order to develop this site. The industrial trust, again, my father, who's now nine years old, still sharing a company, began negotiating to sell the park to Mr. Spencer in 2021. The park was sold to him in August of, uh, 2021. So he applied for a zoning permit to clear the site, um, with the park in mind at a time when he did not own the land. The building inspector issued the zoning permit for site clearing based on old plans that hadn't been inspired, stating that new plans were accepted. Mr. Spencer proceeded to immediately strip the site and start shooting it off-site. Um, I believe my Zoom was going out, but I believe I heard say that no earth was removed from the site. That was an absolute lie. Um, this damaged our family's reputation because our names were on those permits. And the building inspector had no right to issue the zoning permit because the project required site clearing review. Some of the laws that included on the zoning permit application that had a name on it were not even owned by us. They were owned by the business next door. Yes, the earth removal has stopped under verbal order by the building inspector. This is completely insufficient. There's nothing in writing that I know of. No penalties, no consequences. If Mr. Spencer truly cared about the trees and then logged the view of his neighbors and the tourists on Route Three, why didn't he take down the trees in the first place? So now I'm going to put on my hat as coordinator of Save the Pine Barrens, a nonprofit organization. I want to make it clear that the Save the Pine Barrens is entirely separate from the southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barren lines. Mr. Man is not a member of Save the Pine Barrens. Save the Pine Barrens is a nonprofit group whose mission is to protect and preserve and steward land and water here in southeastern Mass. Land that is being stripped mine and sand mined under the rules of various development projects like this. Yes, we sent a letter to the building inspector asking him to enforce the zoning bylaw by restoring the site or demanding some certification, either onsite and offsite, for this project to move forward. This is all, so we need a full investigation by the Select Board of the Building Department and how this project was permitted in the first place through the insurance of zoning permit. I don't want to say it, but it certainly goes to us from the outside. There is a simple seriously involved town officials to make sure that the sand and ground is stripped mine out of this town more and more every day. The site does not need sand and ground removed in order to be developed. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else who care to comment? If not, I will bring it back to the board for questions, comments.
Mr. Chairman? To us.
Yeah? Yes?
Just writing in the policy, one of my reasons why I'm here. I, um, I share on the comments of what I'm saying to see. I probably saw, like, I'm not a good speaker, I'm just here to speak on behalf of them. But, um, I'm a man that put for the Italians. And, you know, our key, one of the key charges for us is economic development. And we, you know, we lose that every single year. Real terrible projects, residential big marathons of projects every year. And all that does is create more impact on police, fire, schools, and so forth. You know, we're running out of projects like this. And I think this, you know, watches and some people, you know, doesn't get off on the way this kind of came about. But we don't have a lot of, you know, money. And I could speak to, you know, the fact, um, just a lot of people were seeing the type of space that Spencer's trying to create. Yeah, let me tell you, this is a huge demand for this contract base and that type of development. Um, and we are just running out of that. And when I talk about, it's just like a battery, and everybody talks, everyone talks, I'm beginning to run out of development. Running out of development. Every time a project like this comes along, everything comes out of the water. And, and these developers, they are frustrated. One of them has some bad comments on it for being anti-business friendly. And we lost great projects. You talk about, you know, the land of the high angles and another area of the high, you know, lots of projects. This is a great project. And I, and if you want to talk about, you know, the little backs of the vine, the little, uh, soul of the city. I like this project. I like the look of it. I, I think if that's what it's going to take to reduce that town, to, to make that streamlined, make that look more presentable, uh, I don't like it. I just, you know, I'm not sure that the board has to decide, but it is proper. But I'm just telling you the struggles that we face, that I face, and the struggles that me and my board members face on the economic foundation group, uh, just trying to fight with our plan to look at the zoning application that had to be a possibility. So, um, I just wanted to share my comments on that. And, um, I'm looking forward to some of this, with this own decision on what's best to handle this project. But I think we are very, very limited in limited projects, I guess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have two other people.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And y'all, I like my residents here in Adamant. Uh, one, one thing in common here is we all know is our only industry associated now is, and it always has been, tourism. Scott's project is right on the town line when the end of the town will come and the major highway. If, whatever needs to be done to maybe resolve the issues at the end, could be worked out. The site plan, law, it's definitely going to be more revealing to the eye. Some of us in the business, we can't hide all these type of things. And unfortunately, all these, it's gone on EIs or into the town. Right in the historical zone, big sign of, right, welcome to Plymouth. This exit will make hours or so. So whatever needs to be handled, could be worked out. And somehow resolve the bodies of all the ridiculous project work. And lower everything down, it's going to be beneficial to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else up there?
Hello, uh, my current identity, I'm in there as, I have some news. I am, I am a company engineer. And I work on the site plan to develop this facility. I don't know who's described it, that we developed the unified complex plan so that we could develop this park. We had a group, uh, same size as what we did. When we started in here, when we started, it involved four, fifteen thousand, fifteen yards of hotel. Uh, eventually we need to work out a plan. The balance of the site, the second site is the other part of the unit five. Um, because we next, we raised some bill for the large portion, ten acres, um, to the five acre. And the balance of the site. Now that required a million dollars, thirteen. But the chief of all, I'm not an expert in this, it's a secret. I will say that the pay was for fifteen thousand, I think. So the site was significantly depressed. Um, but it was balanced, you know, on an excellent, meaningful. So that being said, I can think of the board of commissioners, and ask the board to announce the site. So, you know, we had a bad, you knew the site, it was eight more or less, eight innings. You know, it doesn't mean five hundred cubic yards is the next. So maybe that's what a hundred cubic yards, eight hundred dollars. But we're taking ones. Um, I definitely think we can get a nice site, it's a plan. Um, you know, I put the project together, we had five acres, we had five, six, seven, uh, three, three of our. And I know she didn't, I'm just getting that out to see. Talked aside about the transfer, some of it, um, they asked the attorney to leave, uh, to allow it and file an extension. We keep alive, but that's even getting exposed. My understanding that the application filed, it was no eligibility to export it. Um, we didn't know that we need to, we have to, we answered it, it was due to, I don't know, trees including on the vintage portion, which is not a part of the, so there is an issue with the plan that could design a part of the plans. Um, so I just think the board needs to consider. The other thing, with the press, you may not know that. So this land, we're going to do a lot of party. Um, it's been a long time making sure that part of the wires, why are they being applied? I don't see how this can ever change that. So I, I, I question your answer to that. So again, I hope the board thinks I'm incisive of this. Perhaps the extension against the EIA, like I see a profile, how we, we are coming through. I'm going to do this from the three. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please?
Matthew Glenn. I'm here as a citizen of the town, as a business owner in town, and a homeowner, and a landowner in the industrial park, all put together. And as Mike said, um, I was kind of, I was involved with this in the beginning. I consider Mr. Sheen a friend. I've worked with him for many years, and we support a lot of the same charities together. So I got to know him pretty well. And, uh, believe it or not, I was involved in the purchase of the two properties that are in question. Using Mr. Sheen's money, we purchased it from a gentleman in Spain who wouldn't break them up into two pieces, which gave Jerry the ten-acre parcel over there. And I was involved with, uh, Rich Tabrizinski and, uh, Adam. As we put together, we worked with Bill Shar and put it together and went in with a unified complex. And I worked with the town to get that, and we got approval for that. And then, uh, unfortunately, a lot of people in here know, my son was killed in a car crash, and I lost interest and basically walked away. So I introduced Scott and Mr. Sheen together as this, for this to come together. So I've been involved with it from the beginning and followed it closely. And I, I agree with what Mike said, is we had a unified complex. We were putting it together. We were going to put up this exact same-sized building, um, on the larger lot and the forty thousand square foot one on the smaller lot. And eventually, I was talking to Jerry about me purchasing that forty thousand square foot building as an investment for, for us. And, uh, obviously, I lost interest in that as well. And then when Scott came with this new concept, what kind of made sense to me is, um, and I used to be a neighbor when my other building in Plymouth to where he is now. And he's right, there are orange cones just miles high in the place. There are signs all over the place. And I thought to myself, when you're driving into Plymouth, that's not what I want to see. So when he came up with the idea of lowering the grade and then keeping the look so when you came in, it was good, I, I thought it was a great idea. So I would just like to put my support behind that. And, and you know, Bill House, he's right. I've worked on the Plymouth Economic Development Council. I've worked on the Chamber of Commerce. And what this town needs is more economic development. And if you're going to build something like this with solar, and we're going to be putting renewable energy, uh, electric vehicle charging stations on there, it's going to become a, a showpiece for us. And if you're not going to allow it in the industrial park, where can we put it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Brian Kuhn, resident of Plymouth. Uh, my company is Associated Energy Developers. We do renewable energy systems across the country. Uh, Mr. Spencer asked me to lay out some of the solar systems on this, uh, property. And I thought I might just add a couple of benefits here that you may not see or be readily apparent. First of all, this type of system that's, uh, that they're promoting is exactly the kind of system that the Massachusetts D O E R is asking for. It's making use of rooftop and parking space areas. It's not greenfield. That's exactly the kind of guidelines they have been issued. Second is that the new regulations require us to also install storage, electrical storage with the systems. And therefore, we have, uh, included into this design, uh, several megawatts worth of electrical storage, which helps the grid. And that grid capacity and grid resiliency is, is also needed nowadays. Um, there is also an awful lot of, uh, although it's not a direct replacement for trees, um, there's a lot of carbon sequestration and such that is done by the solar systems. Uh, you can look it up, but there's almost the equivalent of one acre of solar panels over the twenty-year lifetime provides amount of, uh, carbon sequestration of about seventy acres of trees. So there's a lot of good benefits here. I'm in favor of the project, and I just wanted to support it. Thank you.
Any last questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Back to the board.
If I may, just, if everyone else has done, I just want to clarify a couple of things that were said.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be brief. Um, one thing, one comment that was made was that the trees were removed from the site, and they didn't need to be, and that is completely false. Because if you look at the approved site plan, to build those retaining walls out to the property line, the whole lot would need to be clear cut so that the land could be worked, foundations could be put in for those walls, and the walls constructed. Not to mention the earth that would need to be moved. You can't do that with trees still on the site. That's a fact. There's no way around it, especially the way that it was currently designed. Um, as for the removal of the soil, at no time did myself or Mr. Shay Spencer, uh, make a statement that no soil was removed for the site. We know the soil was removed from the site. It was removed because we needed working room to do some soil testing that we were trying to conduct. Just being open and honest about it, just didn't want it to go unsaid. Thank you for the time.
Go on. Okay.
So, Chairman, if I just could, one quick thing. So there were a number of things that were raised here about fines, about issues with the permit, who, you know, who was properly on a permit or not. And I would just point out that your role tonight is advisory to the building commissioner on the site plan only. And, and the second issue is whether or not you're comfortable with the earth removal or if that requires additional permitting. Those are really the two things before you. Building Commissioner is fully aware of those other issues. Those are all things that are dealt through his department. Again, just to bring it back to what you're doing tonight, it's the review of the site plan. And then second is the discussion about the gravel removal and whether you feel comfortable that's incidental to this project.
And if we don't feel comfortable...
Then your recommendation, I would say, is to recommend that a special permit be required through this zoning board of appeals, and then the applicant would have two options. One is to try to move forward with the site plan at a higher elevation, uh, visible from the road, and do it, uh, that way, or come in and go through this board of appeals for that special permit. I would just say, from my perspective, that special permit, I'm not sure what safeguards or what conditions you might want to impose on this with that special permit. It might be nice to have the special permit, but I don't see, especially in an industrial park, any kind of additional safeguards that you would want to impose on that gravel removal in an area, again, that already has heavy truck traffic and, and movement. And certainly, if there are things that come to mind, and I know one was mentioned to me earlier, uh, there is certainly the ability to talk about certain things to add to this. But again, just by sending it to the zoning board of appeals for one more permit, I'm not sure that that accomplishes a heck of a lot more in this industrial park. I think if it was in any other area of town, certainly. But in, and again, as you've heard, I think I have the same feeling. Area where you want to encourage development, uh, I think it's, it's a reasonable request. But again, that's the, the two issues before you tonight.
Thank you. Tim?
Okay. So that was a lot to reel in and listen to for everybody speaking tonight.
We could go home and have a nap.
Uh, maybe you can, but I won't be able to.
Um, a couple of quick comments before I ask a question or two. We need economic development in this town without a doubt. This is the area that we should be putting in this type of business to accomplish that. There's not enough commercial land in the town now as it is. We, I'm repeating because these are the things that I wrote down. I'm just repeating the same thing in the board of selectmen chair said, a former board of selectman chairman. This is the place that we need to allow this business to go in. Okay? So I think it's very important. It brings jobs, it brings taxes. And we take care of a land that's an eyesore already. This is in the industrial park. Anything we do in there is going to be an improvement as far as I'm concerned. So I do have a couple of questions though. I've gotta wrap my head around the permit being supposedly received illegally, using false name, somebody else's company name, et cetera. Is that, that's not within our realm, but I certainly am not happy if that is the case.
And again, that's something the building commission has to deal with. I mean, I don't have all the particulars myself, but that's, I think that's also in refer, in reference to the earlier permit, not the one before you now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So a couple of questions on these elevations and the requirement of almost 500,000 yards to be removed from the site. How high did we say the retaining wall was gonna be if you built per the previous plan from ground level up as far as the retaining wall? Couple more questions.
Mm-hmm.
So that you're not answering one and then we go back and forth. Did you research and look into possibly cutting the gravel removal in half? And seeing what that does to the site and retaining walls? Have you added complete buffers and everything in the, the plan that you submitted this evening? And I would like to see it be even more dense than what's on that plan as far as plantings and view sheds from route three. So if you could answer those two questions for me, I would appreciate it.
If I could, just to clarify the last one, are you just asking if we would be willing to add more plantings to that buffer?
Either way, whatever way that the building is built and approved, I would like to see the landscaping augmented.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think that that's ever been an issue. I think we're willing to do whatever the community feels is in the best interest for sure.
So what, what's the height of the retaining?
The retaining walls in the permitted plan were 18 feet at its highest point. Uh, we've got a couple of walls. I'll have to ask, I defer to Rich.
The highest is 12.
All right. The highest walls that we have on the current development are 12, but they're in select areas that nod along the property lines themselves. One I know is in an area where we're trying to build a detention pond for water treatment, for water quality improvement.
Probably also, what would you say the reduction of, of wall is percentage wise? From the percentage of wall reduced, so you have 15 foot walls, but I'd say by eyeball, I would guess about 80% of those retaining walls are eliminated.
Yep.
So 75% of the retaining walls would be eliminated completely.
Yeah. The idea was that we would slope all that and make it plantable.
And, um, have you given me thought into all those trips at 480, 88,000 yards at 28 yards at a time? And the traffic, and the effects of the roads?
We have.
We have. Have you thought about a reimbursement or some type of protection for the gravel that's being removed at all? Just thinking.
So what, what I would say, and it's something that was negotiated, this is a little different as an allowed use if it is, but I think what he's referring to is often cases in a gravel removal operation, the number is usually 10 cents a cubic yard that would be donated to the town to be used for improvements or maintenance of any of the roads in the vicinity of that property. So.
I don't have any knowledge of that to be able to expand on that, but I can take that back.
You can certainly take a look into it and get back to the board to lay the date. You want to? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may have more, but that's all I have for now.
Okay. Forget it.
All right. I'm gonna try and put my notes into some sort of a coherent discussion. And I will be probably repeating what everyone has said, but I think it's well worth repeating. I do have a question for you though, Lee. Uh, I wanna make sure to verify that there was a cease and desist on this property until some of this was figured out. Is that correct?
So again, these are better questions to the building commissioner. My understanding is that the permit was for site preparation and tree removal only. When it was identified that material is being, was being trucked offsite, a call was placed to the owner and there was no written cease and desist, but a request to stop any removal of material offsite, which again, my understanding is that occurred. So no written cease and desist.
Thank you for that clarification. I do want to say again that I'm a proponent of industrial build in our industrial area. Uh, I am not a proponent of housing in our industrial area because then we have no room for industry. And from everything you've heard tonight, from Chairman Quintle to everyone else, I do agree that this town does need smart growth and industry is a part of that. It's even in our master plan. I have also said every time that an applicant comes in front of us and wants to excuse their behavior because of they've built and then come for an excuse. In other words, post facto, oh, we built this in error. We're so sorry, we're coming back to you, but it's already built. What do you want us to do? You can't ask us to tear it down. That comes in front of us more often than we would like to see. And there's some, there seems to be some of that in this, that we have clearing going on and we, we have some of that in this. And that's always disturbing. So what happened with all of this? Again, I believe that it's important for those that are aggrieved around the permitting issues to resolve those issues. And that's not what's in front of this board tonight. And I'd really like to make sure that my comments and how I vote is consistent with what's in front of us tonight. I really want this town to take advantage of the federal infrastructure bill. It's out there. The mon, if we don't get the money, somebody else will. That's the way this grab goes. And you presented to us that this is how you're going to build this property. Is that correct? Could you clarify that a little bit for me?
Uh, we were just basically saying that we're, we really want to ramp up our operations. As I said, we've grown over the past 20 years from one to 50 people. And this bill will add in, I think it was 24.5 billion dollars on top of what is already going to be spent by the state level governments. Now this increased demand will give us the ability to bid more aggressively on these contracts. We'll be able to bring in some of these contracts. Uh, he's gonna go back to this manufacturing facility. But currently right now, what we do is we'll install a lot of these larger signs, but we need to outsource all of this equipment to other manufacturing firms who are 13 to 15 to 25 hours away. So what we want to do is we want to bring that closer to here. We want to capitalize on some of that 25 billion dollars that is going to New England in the terms of this is just allocations for road and bridges. So our effort at expanding our company is hopefully to capture some of that. And I think that will have a positive externality of increasing jobs in Plymouth. I mean, in order for us to run those manufacturing facilities, we're gonna have to hire dozens of people, dozens of shift managers, dozens of people to, I mean, now you have self, you have Plymouth South High School where they have the tech program and we would be happy to, to partner with that school and hopefully increase manufacturing jobs. So I mean, that's, that's kind of where we want to go. That's how we want to expand. I think this is a great outlet for us to expand.
Again, uh, grabbing federal dollars that have been in the works for what seems like centuries was probably only decades is, I, I think important for this community, whether you're doing it directly or indirectly is pretty much what you're explaining to us. But I don't think that, I, I think there's a real concern in, in the middle of all of this. And that is, um, there shouldn't, that I for one on this board don't want to see a precedent being set here that, um, uh, sand and gravel as a very valuable commodity in today's economy can be basically bartered off of the land in Plymouth in order to move projects forward. And it kind of sits as the elephant in the room in this discussion. But then again, we're here to, to take a look at a very somewhat narrow interpretation of what's happened with the permitting, with the sand and gravel. So I for one would like to ask for a special permit for the removal of the sand and gravel to go to the zoning board of appeals. That puts another set of eyes on the discussion of sand and gravel and how it plays into this project, which I would like to see move forward. It's important to the community and it will have positive impact on the community. But because it sits here within the discussion and with how this permitting, which we're not here actually to review tonight, um, I, I for one would like to see it go to the zoning board of appeals. I know that, um, our interim manager who's leaving us right now.
Conservation.
Uh, for the conservation commission, who will not be reviewing this, I believe. Thank you, Lee. So he and I somewhat disagree on, on that point. I'd also like to see that a bond is posted for this project and that the bond actually be in reference to the solar panels because we've seen others come before us and kind of make the promise of a solar panel kind of as a sweetener, but then they never go up. Uh, they're never part of the deal. And so if there's a bond that you have to post in order to show good faith that solar panels actually will be part of this project, it's something that would be important to me also as a voting member of this board. Again, a lot of what my colleague on Zoom said probably has a lot of bearing and weight here, but it's again, seems a little bit more like punishment after the fact and we're not here to actually discuss that this evening. So on the two points that we're here to discuss, I would like to see this go to the zoning board of appeals to, for a second set of eyes, particularly regarding, it's because it will be for the sand and gravel. So for a special permit. And I would also like to see that we make a recommendation to the building commissioner that a bond be placed on this project for the building of the solar panels. Otherwise it's the, the findings are already articulated. Is that correct, Robin? As far as the landscaping?
Yes.
And all of that?
And they've also actually submitted a more recent landscape plan that does include more buffering along the highway with some lower dense shrubbery and things. It'll infill underneath the white pines as well already.
Which, which I appreciate because in essence, it's the whole point of why the sand and gravel is being removed. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll add a couple of comments to that before I bring it back to Frank. I agree with both of my fellow board members. There's one issue that I have that seems to be left out in most other issues, especially when economic development is mess, is mentioned, which annoys me substantially because we have an enormous groundwater resource in this community. And the more sand we dig out, the quicker that gets polluted and useless. And the value of that water is cheap now. Look at what it costs out west. It's enormously valuable. And we have to be very careful about how we deal with it. If we're not, economic development is out the drain 50 years from now. So I would consider looking at details at this excavation and making sure you're getting closer to the groundwater table. How are you gonna protect that? You're losing sand. What does sand do? Sand binds to the water. It holds the water. It protects it from being polluted to some extent and it filters it. The more you take out, the less that happens. So somehow or another, you have to convince me that whatever you're gonna do, you're gonna protect the drainage water that comes off of those structures and goes into the ground. The other thing that I would like to mention is the fact that I think a huge amount of our income, everybody's always talking about lack of income because we don't have enough industrial growth. We put in an industrial growth there and we tear down all the sand and all the buffer to the highway and we've lost a good percentage of our income from visitors because they don't want to drive through a place like that. You've made an effort to fix it. That's fine. I would suggest that you add another implement to it and that is take some of this sand and gravel that you want to remove and put a berm on top of the hill and heighten it by six feet and then plant the berm. To do that, you'll probably have to get permission from the state to intrude on their highway land, but it'll make a much better project. I think that's about all I have to add to that and I'll bring it back to Frank.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just like to say, I think we walk and, and choose them at the same time. I think characterization that opposing, opposing strip mining potential to site and, and remove all the trees and shrubs is, is anti-business. It's not. In fact, it's long-term business. We don't protect these things as the chairman was saying. We don't protect our air and our water, our natural resources that are here. And then we don't do that diligently. We're hurting, not gonna have a business here. We don't want to be either in the long term. And it's actually not long-term. We're working on all of these natural resources to be far more critical. And then we may need to protect them. This area, it's an empty area. It's a specific lot from outside of the architecture business, but just barely. This area is rich in these sources. And then that site again, was not a treeless area. It was not an area, someone said, anything would be the improvement. Well, based on what we have now, that's close to a true zone. But beforehand, it was a beautiful piece of property with great pottery, thickly wooded. And a wonderful lot for a city that has been passed and we're in the community of, of the free and then I'm not wanting to see an ice floor. But please, we're there to protect that. One of the questions I have is, I think the answer should be, why would you, if you're so concerned with the character and quality of the community and not giving people see that as, anymore to. Why did you remove all of those trees and then shrubs to begin with? I think the answer seems clear. At least I would need to convince them that it's not, that you were after something else first. And that is the sand gravel. And first it was 185,000 cubic yards and then work, and now to have millions of cubic yards. So I do think we can find compromise. I do think we can walk and choose them at the same time, that we can protect our natural resources and still encourage businesses. As a matter of fact, when we protect our natural resources, the better quality of business will probably attract. That's the reputation we need. So let's try to do that, but let's not rush into it. I, I don't want to be pressured into coming up with, let's move this forward right now because we need this so bad. We can do this in the short term and then. We can do this in the short term, and we probably would be foolish to it if the regulations hadn't been followed, if the regulation had been followed to this point, and we didn't have this massive excavation happen. But I think you should take a month or so and find a way to do both, to walk and chew gum, to protect the natural resources, maybe lose some of the other installations, maybe reduce the size of that building, go from 10,000 to 137,000, which is a wonderful testimony to the success of the business. And it is an impressive success record, but it's also, we don't have to go that fast. There's plenty of space there. That's why it's something that's more reusable, reusable that land, and accomplish something you want to accomplish. I think we can do that. And that's my invitation to have discussions continue, to continue this, not to rush forward and give this into hands and to see where anyone else. Yeah, let's find a way to condition this proposal in a way that pleases everyone. And I am not so religious about this business at all. I'm opposed to this in a wrong way, or at any cost. We can't afford those costs anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the non-voting member of this board, what I say may have some value to people or not. But I start by saying that I'm a bit distressed by hearing from so many people regarding this project relating to matters that this board doesn't address. I've heard words like "fraud" used. I've heard the phrase "strip mining" used. I've heard other extremes used, none of which have actually been established by any of the authorities that actually do address these issues. So I become concerned when this board makes decisions based upon not facts but rhetoric. So my first request to this board, as the non-voting member, is to consider your decisions based on the facts, based on what's before us, not the speculation, not the extremes, not the assertions that haven't been proven. There are two issues before this board, essentially. There is an existing plan upon which, I believe, unless I am corrected, the owner of the property, and it has now been established that the petitioner is the owner of the property, notwithstanding what others have said in the past about transfers, non-transfers, names, et cetera. The owner of the property can build what's been, what's been approved, or they can be given an opportunity to build something else, in this instance, what they have proposed or a variant thereof. They have provided a rationale for doing what they're doing. We may accept it, we may not, but they've provided a rationale. The rationale being an aesthetic having to do with lowering the building site, preventing some of the visual impacts, and that's something worth considering. One of the board members here has suggested that maybe it's worth looking at not quite being as extreme, certainly a valid concern. But I'd like to echo what everyone else has said, which is, this is the industrial park. This is where this is supposed to take place. A reference was made to our town master plan. One of the things that was noted in our town master plan of 2004, printed in 2006, is that this town lacks sufficient building sites of significant size to encourage business. We don't have them. This is one of them. Somebody's proposing to build on it. Let's dial it all back and come up with an appropriate answer. As Mr. Mann said, let's let this board, not other boards, not other committees, let this board work with this petitioner and see if we can come up with an appropriate way to build what is best for the town visually, economically, environmentally. All of those things need to be factored in. That's what we're here to do. I hope that's what we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any final questions?
So.
Yes, that was well said. Thank you. Very well said.
So I have a question for the petitioner, anyone who is a petitioner. Probably not you. Not you as the attorney. Can you address any of the questions that the board has asked you tonight? One being, is there a possibility for a more balanced site? Is there a possibility for a berm? Can we work those conditions, can we impose those conditions this evening? Or is it something that you would feel more comfortable bringing back and discussing further? I'm just, go ahead.
Can I just, I don't mean to interrupt. I don't think you're going to be able to answer my question by showing me an elevation of what's going on or showing us a berm on the highway for us to be comfortable to vote on something this evening. So I'd like to see this thing be continued versus voting to send this to a zoning Board of Appeals or anything along those lines. I'd like to work with you guys and with the board and with the public to create something that's going to benefit not only the developer, but the town of Plymouth and everybody as all. So I really don't think you can be able to answer my questions tonight to my satisfaction.
So to continue, Mr. Grandy?
I would like to see you come back. You've heard the comments made by not only every member of the planning board as far as 500,000 cubic yards of gravel being removed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. I just want to finish my statement.
I'm sorry.
So I think, listening to my fellow board members, I will pull back on the special permitting because I understand a better of their feeling. But I wanted to hear from you whether or not you could address any of those, this, our questions this evening before we go back to a vote.
Well, thank you. I don't think the questions regarding the site elevations and those details can be addressed. Those are engineering questions, and I don't think they're prepared to address those tonight. But there were two points that were brought up tonight by the board that I think we can address right now. One was whether we would consider a bond, and my client has advised me he certainly would. And secondly, was whether it'd be a consideration as to payment of some percentage of, of the value received for, you know, the gravel removal. And again, that would be another consideration he would certainly undertake to consider. This is not, you know, we talk about incidental, and this is clearly incidental to this particular project. And I don't want to get all legal mumbo jumbo, as Mr. Chairman had said in the meeting, but Black's Law Dictionary does have a description and a definition for incidental. And this is more incidental than it is not incidental, in my view. But in any event, I believe that our engineering and architectural team could probably come back with answers to address those other issues. But as to those first two that came up, as I suggested, Mr. Spencer is clearly on board with both the bond and with, you know, potentially considering the payment for whatever the cost is. This was not, the removal was not, you know, you've got a site here, and if you had like some uplands, you know, quarter mile away that was removing gravel, clearly not incidental. This is necessary and essential to this project. So if, you know, if it comes down to, you know, an issue with that, we certainly would consider it. I don't want to belabor this hearing any longer and prolong it, but yes, we would be amenable to a short continuance of this hearing and come back with the ability to address those specific questions that the board has.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer.
What's our next available date?
Our next meeting is January 11th, and then I believe it's the 25th after that. So 11th is our next meeting.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue until January 11?
I'd like to make a motion to continue until January 11th to address the issues brought before this board, based on our discussions this evening, particularly whether or not we could have a more balanced site, while the bond issue seems to be answered, whether or not 10 cents per cubic yard can be given to the town for its other projects and a berm be built. Did I miss any of the points?
No, I think groundwater.
Groundwater.
And.
Make sure whatever goes into the ground is as clean as what it came out.
I think those are on the findings, correct?
I mean, there are, there's no time. Time on January 11th, we need a time helping, so it's an informal review.
Right.
Okay.
We have one public hear. We have one public hearing that is scheduled for 7:05, and then we have another site plan review scheduled, so it would be sometime after that.
Okay. A second motion.
A second. Any further discussion? Oh, in favor, Tim?
Yes.
We're gonna.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Malcolm?
Yes.
So January 11th?
We are so popular tonight, next time, next meeting, we'll have a change machine at the door, so when you come in, you can, it's like going to the movies.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're gone. You lost control.
Oh, no, I know. We let it go tonight. No, yeah. We could.
We have to come in, out with a clear set of instructions of the board of here.
Oh, worry.
We can be the ones to make. Yeah, okay. We ended it, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess I might just have to add that negative about that, maybe you should develop.
I know, I've never seen him talk.
This is a meeting that has been adjourned by a hero on the channel.
It has not been adjourned yet, Frank.
Last item on our agenda is a discussion on the Board of Health liaison.
I guess that might be my cue to just give you a little bit of background as soon as it clears out in here a little bit. Gentlemen, would you consider closing that door so that we can continue our meeting? Oh, there it goes. Thank you, I appreciate it. There, a little. So as you remember, this board voted that we have a liaison to the Board of Health, and this board has liaisons or delegates to multiple boards in this town, as does the select board, who is the other board that's part of the executive branch of our government. So we have two boards that are the executive branch, select board and planning board. And select board and planning board have, over the past decades, in order to further the collaboration between boards, appointed either delegates or liaisons. They are written into our charter specifically for some boards, but not for others. And what I found interesting in researching our liaisons, and I know we are all liaison to a steering committee, a village steering committee. Tim is on the roads advisory committee. I'm on the community preservation committee, et cetera.
Yes.
Correct. But what I'm, when I researched it, what I recognized is that all the committees and boards that have input into our comprehensive master plan have either a planning board liaison or delegate, except for the Board of Health, which was part of the rationale to appoint a liaison to the Board of Health. I was voted as liaison. To date, the chairman of the Board of Health disagrees with the liaison model through email. And, but in a confusing email to the select board, basically says he disagrees with the liaison model, but then asks the select board to appoint a liaison to the Board of Health. So I don't think the disagreement has to do with the liaison model. I think that the disagreement has to do with the person who was chosen to be liaison. So I think it's a personal issue, which I don't know how this board can react to that or whether it actually has any standing on any boards whatsoever. We're all people with our personal opinions, and yet we manage to work together as a board. So, so that's how it stands right now. I was instructed by the secretary to the Department of Public Health that should I want to participate in a Board of Health meeting as liaison, that I have to come in as, through public comment, and write an email of what my questions are. And they will be read as the chairman considers practicable. And that's the extent of what my involvement can be, which is, again, disconcerting because there's so much in front of this planning board coming up with our comprehensive master plan particularly. But there are many occasions, because I was the chair of the Board of Health and because I sat on the planning board at the same time as liaison, as alternate, I actually recognized how the two boards should be working together and much more closely. And I served in that function, but once I was no longer on the Board of Health, that functionality ceased to exist. And I, and I think that this board voted correctly in trying to reestablish that functionality. And so that's what I have to say about it, and I appreciate your comments.
How are the Board of Health members assigned?
They are all selected by the select board.
By the select board.
Per the town charter?
Correct. And actually, I wrote that part of the town charter, so I'm very familiar with it, yeah.
Perhaps we should write a letter to the select board suggesting that the chairman be removed unless he can adhere to the policies of liaisons to the board.
Or particularly to adhere to a vote by an executive board.
Let me ask a question before we move on with this. In the charter, does it explicitly state that there is a planning board designated to the Board of Health in the charter?
No, and it doesn't for most of the, for most of.
Roads Advisory Committee, Building Committee, in the charter, it states there shall be a member or representative from the planning.
Correct.
Does it state that in the Board of Health?
No. But it doesn't for any of our village steering committees, it doesn't, it doesn't for many of the liaisons that we appoint.
Unless it's written in stone, then the chairman, it's his discretion to do this, correct?
I'm not sure if it's his.
Well, then it would be a council question. It wouldn't be something that I could answer, or this board could try to have a chairman of an existing Board of Health removed. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
I would not be in favor of that either, because this, this chairman, you know, is doing what he's doing. But here's where I sit with this. This town, the select board and the planning board have used a liaison model, whether it's with. I'm not sure if it's his dis-
Well, then it would be a council question. It wouldn't be something that I could answer, or this board could try to have a chairman of an existing Board of Health removed. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
I would not be in favor of that either because this chairman, you know, is doing what he's doing. But here's where I sit with this. This town, the Select Board and the Planning Board have used a liaison model, whether it's within the charter or not, to further the business of the town for decades. This is the first time we've experienced any resistance to it. And so whether it's a legal issue or not, I don't think it's, that this board should-
Well, then, what it is, what should be done is just a letter back to the, from the planning board to the chairman of the Board of Health and copy the Board of Selectmen of how we are unhappy with the way the chairman, current chairman, is handling our requests for a liaison.
Correct. And it was not even a request, it's a vote. And I think that Mr. Quintle actually said it, Chairman Quintle said it very nicely tonight. He said, "I want to work with this planning board." We should tell him.
You should draft a letter the same way to the Board of Health.
Right. Mr. Quintle, you want to work with us, well then support us.
Well, make a motion to that effect, if we can move on and make a motion, have the chairman draft a letter to the Board of Health stating those exact factors. And copy the Board of Selectmen.
I think the problem, as Ms. Kuhn has stated, is that the Board of Health has not said, "We don't want a liaison." They've actually clearly backtracked on that. The problem, personal or otherwise, from my perspective, is the overly restrictive limitations that they are placing on our proposed liaison, which seem to be incongruous with the role of liaison.
That's where the letter comes in.
So, but I think the letter needs to be very specific in terms of stating, "These are the restrictions you've placed."
Draft it and let all the members see it before it goes out.
I think that that would be, that would be helpful because I think that we, I know letters have already been sent back and forth.
Well, I don't want to rush everybody, but I got to get up at 3 o'clock.
And I'd like to ratchet, I'd like to ratchet it back and see if we can, as you said, let's see if we can get everybody to work together, because otherwise we're just shouting at each other and that's not going to accomplish anything.
And I think that's absolutely the best.
I think it still should be, as I think the discussion members are saying, let's come together, stress the important function that a liaison can have, how it's so important for us to know what they are doing and what we are doing and how they intersect, to stress those positives and allude to the restrictions placed on that relationship right now. And I think if we take that, I anticipate optimistically that they'll reconsider that.
Not to belabor this, because I know Mr. Grandy wants to leave. To date, the Board of Health chair has refused to communicate with the planning board, any representative from the planning board, whether it be Mr. Hartman, or Mr., our chairman, McGregor. So I think that some sort of intermediary, whether it's Mr. Quintle, who does, you know, as chairman of the Select Board, or our interim town manager, it may need some sort of intermediary. But I think we can hash that out in the background and get on with the day.
Let's write the letter, read it, everything, everybody agrees, then it goes.
Okay. I'll take care of that.
Thank you. I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Happy Hanukkah.
Merry Christmas, happy new year.